Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to the Commission on Ethics and Lobbying in Government's annual public hearing. I am the chairman of the Commission, Leonard Austin. We appreciate all of you being here with us either in person or via mainstream in Albany and otherwise. I would like to introduce to you and acknowledge my colleagues on the Commission. Commissioner Dolly Caraballo to my far right, Commissioner James Karas to my far left, Commissioner Michael Cardozo to my immediate right, Commissioner Claudia Edwards between Commissioners Caraballo and Commissioner Cardozo, and Commissioner Seymour James to my left. Also joining us from Albany is Commissioner Nancy Groenewegen, and hopefully by virtual contact, we will have Vice Chair Eva Ayers joining us virtually. On behalf of the Commission, I extend our appreciation to the City Bar Association for its hosting us here today. Finally, I would like to thank the members of the public who have been, who will be providing us with feedback, ideas, and comments on how much we can do with our legislative program and suggestions as to how we can make it better. Our purpose today is to hear testimony and receive comments concerning four overarching topics. They are: the Commission's overall operations, proposed and potential changes in the law that we administer, including our jurisdiction, rules, and regulations; recommendations to improve the structure, administration, and communication of ethics in lobbying, both as laws, regulations, as we have them here in New York State; and our draft of the 2025 legislative agenda, which is posted on our website. For those of you who could not be here today to be able to speak in person or via our virtual means, we encourage that you share your feedback with us in writing, and such writings will be accepted up until Friday, November 15. After today's hearing, we will be carefully reviewing and considering all feedback to help inform the future work of the Commission. That way, we can better serve the public, our stakeholders, and the entities with which we regulate. In a literal sense, the Commission administers, enforces, and interprets New York's ethical laws and lobbying laws. But, as you may know, the scope of our charge goes beyond that. Every member of the Commission, and our executive director Sanford Berland, our dedicated, talented, and excellent staff, are steadfast in their commitment to restoring public's trust in state government. Now, we believe that embracing the feedback and ideas from the public and public interest groups here today, as we do any time throughout the year, is an invaluable part of the process in restoring trust for our government. Today's discussion is a continuation of our prior roundtable hearing, public hearings which were held in March and November of last year. The comments we received from those discussions helped shape our 2024 recommended legislative changes and resulted in some changes to our policies and priorities. Thank you again for joining us here today and for your valuable comments. Serious consideration, as I said, will be given to each and every suggestion and comment which is being submitted today through the 15th and even beyond, of course. We look forward to hearing your comments. Now, I will turn this meeting over to our executive director Sanford Berland, who will describe how the hearing will proceed today. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you, Chair Austin, and thank you to the New York City Bar Association for hosting us. Welcome to each of you attending here at the Bar Association, at the Commission's offices in Albany and virtually, and welcome to those of you watching the livestream, in addition to the members of the Commission joining us here today in Manhattan and at our offices in Albany, our senior staff members, including General Counsel Keith St. John, Deputy General Counsel Cavita Bat, Director of Lobbying Carol Quinn, and Deputy Director Megan Mutolo, Director of Ethics Michael Sand, and Deputy Director Erin Lynch, Director of Communications and Public Affairs, and our Public Information Officer Emily DeSantis, Assistant Director Jean Beatty, and Communications Assistant Taylor Smith. Also, our Director of Investigations and Enforcement Brian Weinberg, and Deputy Director Michael Antolini, as well as Senior Investigators John Amoroso and Elena Infantino, and Senior Managing Analyst Lori DiNatio. We also have our Director of Administration Mariana Cadiz, and Deputy Director Sarah Giacomin ini. We also have our Deputy Directors Gareth Perrin, who heads the Compliance Audit and Review Unit, Melinda Funk, our Director of Financial Disclosure, Megan Henigan, Director of Education, and Marlena Diaz, Learning Innovation Administration Deputy Director. Today's public hearing is an opportunity for Commissioners and staff to hear from you, the public we serve, the communities that we regulate, educate, and advise, the press, and the many other interested groups and individuals who, in varying and important ways, support our work. We want to hear your views on the work we're doing and your suggestions and ideas for how we can do it better and more effectively. Even if we weren't required to have this hearing, we would be having it anyway, because earning the public's trust is not something that can be accomplished without welcoming the public's participation. Having said that, let me get down to the nuts and bolts of today's hearing. First, each person testifying will have 10 minutes to speak. We ask that, out of respect for the other speakers, you adhere to that limit. If anyone wishes to provide additional comments beyond your 10 minutes, please send them to us in writing. Once all the written testimony and commentary has been received, the Commission will review it, along with all of the input we received today, and include it in the assessment as it finalizes its legislative agenda for the coming year, and considers updates and modifications to our regulations, practices, and procedures. The scope of the work ahead of the Commission is appreciable and challenging. However, we are grateful for your presence, your participation in today's hearing, and for your help in providing and guiding our work as we go forward. We'll begin to hear testimony now. Each speaker was provided with a speaker number, and we will proceed with one change in order. If you're attending here in New York City when your name and number are called, please proceed to the microphone before us at the front of the room. If you're in Albany, a staff member will unmute the microphone, and you can proceed. And if you're joining us virtually, please unmute your microphone when it is your turn to speak. And our first speaker here in Manhattan is Rachel Foss. Rachel?
Good afternoon, members and staff of the Commission on Ethics and Lobbying in Government, or also known as COLIG. My name is Rachel Foss, and I'm the Senior Policy Advisor for Reinvent Albany. We advocate for a more transparent and accountable New York government. First, thank you for holding this hearing as required by law. I appreciated the remarks that you'd be holding the hearing anyway. We support many of the administrative changes you've made since the last hearing and the roundtable to improve ethics and lobbying oversight. We also appreciate you sharing your draft legislative agenda for comment. Unfortunately, the progress made by COLIG has been undermined by former Governor Cuomo's lawsuit challenging its constitutionality. Ironically, we opposed COLIG's initial creation because we believed it was not independent enough to rein in unethical governors. That said, we are firmly convinced that COLIG is constitutional and filed an amicus brief to that effect with other watchdogs to the Court of Appeals. We believe the lower court's position that the New York State Constitution requires oversight bodies be controlled by the governor is dangerous, illogical, and ahistorical. Essentially, the lower court interprets the state constitution as creating a governor who is an elected Marnok, who can break laws with impunity, checked only by the unlikely threat of impeachment, a power that has only been used once in over two centuries. COLIG's legislative agenda includes a number of good proposals that would improve ethics and lobbying oversight. However, we once again urge you to aim much higher. Public trust and confidence in New York government has been badly eroded by an endless series of ethics, sexual harassment, and corruption scandals. COLIG has to be bold, or it will fail to fully restore public trust. Reinvent Albany's testimony makes recommendations in three areas: regulatory and administrative changes, including actions to date in the need for transparency of the content of informal advisory opinions; legislative changes to improve transparency of lobbying and financial disclosures; strengthening the Code of Ethics, amending the Open Meetings Law, and establishing an independent budget for COLIG; and increasing the Commission's budget and conducting an independent review of staffing needs. I'll try to paraphrase so that I don't go over my allotted time. But first, on the regulatory changes. Since the last hearing, you've made a number of administrative changes that we have previously supported and recommended, including publishing open data on lobbying, for lobbying reports. COLIG's predecessor Jacob had stopped publishing lobbying data in an open data format, and we're pleased to see that now be published. Requiring Commissioners to approve guidance for statewide elected agencies or authority heads, again, this is something we've strongly supported. And barring communication with appointing authorities on Commission matters, and requiring communications from appointing authorities be shared with all COLIG members. The issue of ex parte communications was also something we were concerned with, and we are glad to see movement in that area. We also support the Commission's intention to publish a formal advisory opinion on how COLIG can respond when public officials make misstatements about guidance they have received, which is noted in your draft legislative agenda for next year. This is a step forward, and we look forward to reviewing the draft opinion, but we strongly prefer a law that requires informal advisory opinions to senior officials, such as elected statewide officials, be published, so there's no doubt about what is permitted. And next, on the legislative recommendations. While COLIG has drafted a number of worthwhile legislative proposals, we encourage you to get behind some bills that are already introduced into the legislature, including some listed below. One proposal that you considered in your prior legislative agendas that you deferred for more consideration, we'd like to give you some more context and research that we've completed. Specifically, on reporting the position on lobbying reports, we'd encourage you to support this legislation. We actually have a draft legislative proposal that is attached to my testimony that was emailed to your staff. And to help you understand what works in other states in this area, we've compiled some information about how other states report activity in support or opposition to legislation. I'll just highlight a few. So Idaho requires reporting of information about items within appropriation bills being lobbied on. Montana currently requires reporting of whether the lobbying activity was in support, opposition, or modification of official actions. Colorado requires reporting of whether lobbying clients are supporting, opposing, mending, or monitoring legislation. Nebraska requires lobbyists to show on their statement of activity, support, or opposition to legislation. And then Wisconsin allows lobbyists the option to report the position on legislation and allows uploading of supporting documentation, such as memos of support. Based on our review of other states' best practices, we've, as I mentioned, drafted a legislative proposal, and we believe the best practice for disclosing pro-con positions of lobbying would be to use simple categories for simplicity and clarity. Four specifically: support, support with proposed amendments; opposed, and opposed absent proposed amendments. We do not support use of neutral language, like neutral, monitoring, or no position, because we know that simply keeping an eye on a bill is not really lobbying or necessarily a reportable activity. Another take is that, you know, excuse me, I'll move on to the next proposal. Secondly, we have a new area we'd like you to look at. We want you to consider legislation that would require lobbyists or lobbying clients to report payments made to community groups and attempt to influence that group's position on a governmental action. An emerging issue that has been covered by publications like The City are payments being made by casino lobbyists to local community groups who would otherwise be speaking out against casinos at public hearings with the media or to local officials. We understand this activity fits in the gray area of lobbying, because the groups or individuals being paid may not be engaged in direct lobbying. We ask COLIG to consider what new reporting might be appropriate in this area, or to clarify what is already required to be reported, but not commonly understood to be a reportable expense of activity. Another take is that lobbying clients, in this case casino investors, making the payments are engaged in grassroots lobbying and should be required to register as lobbyists. Either way, we're flagging this as an emerging problem. And as far as a few other bills that we have supported, just want to flag them for your continued consideration. The first is disclosure of lobbying and nominations. We support S. 7883, which is a Gianaris and McDonald bill. It was amended in 2024 to no longer be retroactive, following a veto from Governor Hochul in 2023. We also encourage you to look at requiring lobbyists to report political contribution and fundraising activity. We appreciate COLIG considered this in your legislative agenda, specifically Bill S. 2130, introduced by Senator Krueger. We would note, however, that one aspect of the New York State campaign finance system has dramatically changed since we initially recommended this proposal. Starting in 2024, lobbyist contributions are not eligible under the new public matching system, which was started this year. Because of this new requirement, we believe lobbyist contributions should be subject to greater transparency. And lastly, we continue to support lessening the filing burden for smaller filers. This would permit filers who spend between $5,000 and $10,000 on lobbying each year to report only semi-annually rather than bimonthly. This is currently authorized in New York City, but not currently in place under the city clerk. This would ease the administrative burden for both small filers and COLIG. Secondly, on the public officer's law, there's a number of bills in the legislature requiring financial disclosure statements either being filed electronically or published. We know COLIG has recommendations in those areas, so I just draw your attention to my testimony for more details. And the Code of Ethics, we appreciate that COLIG has continued to propose bills related to esoteric liability, I know no one can say that word without tripping over it, as well as adding penalties to more sections of the state Code of Ethics. We are glad to see COLIG supports adding sexual harassment to the Code of Ethics. However, we ask COLIG to support S. 7137A because it includes both sexual harassment and discrimination as ethics violations, and is already supported by legislators and advocates. Regarding the Open Meetings Law, we agree with COLIG that the current Open Meetings Law provisions for remote participation make it very difficult for public officials to participate in meetings, because a quorum of members must be present in a publicly accessible physical location. That's why we and 30 other groups support legislation that would change the quorum threshold for all non-elected public bodies, for all meetings, not just committee meetings. This bill is A. 10266, introduced by Assemblymember Simone.
You have one minute.
Okay, thank you. This bill would require the presiding officer or another member be present in a physical location while allowing other members of the body to participate remotely. We understand that your proposal is for committee meetings of advisory-only bodies. However, we prefer the legislation that I mentioned, because it's broader, and it doesn't set a different standard for advisory bodies versus all public bodies. Lastly, on the Commission's budget, we continue to support independent budgeting for all enforcement bodies. There's a number of models, including the one used for the New York City Independent Budget Office, and your colleagues at the New York City Conflicts of Interest Board have long proposed their own independent budgeting process. We encourage COLIG to draft its own proposal. And lastly, we continue to support more increases for COLIG in the state budget process next year, and we thank you for your consideration.
All right. Thank you very much. The next speaker is Christine Duffy, who will be testifying from the Albany office.
Albany, we're ready to go whenever you are.
Thank you very much to the Commission for allowing me to come here. I'm a member of the general public, and I feel that I should have been able to just live my best life and not even know about the Ethics Commission. But it isn't until you're harmed by an ethics violation that you find out you, good people, are devoting time to remanaging it. So I'm here to ask the Commission if you'll open up the scope of the jurisdiction. Based on my personal experience, I live in Albany County, I live in the town of Gilderlin. I was not always disabled. I fell, I lost a beautiful home on one side of town, I ended up on the other side of town, and when I got there, I couldn't walk to the public sidewalk. People are blocking it. So I went to the town to say, what's going on? Why can't I walk to the sidewalk? This is 2023, this is a no-brainer. Each person in the town did one of these. It's not my fault, it's not my job. So I didn't know who these players were, and I started investigating on the internet. Who's who in the zoo? So I find out that my, through a basic internet search, that my town supervisor is a lawyer in the Capitol District, a very well-connected lawyer, so much so that no law firm that I spoke to about this problem would take the case, telling me they're either related, they do business, they're a maintainer by the town of Gilderlin. I respect that, I admire that that's how they do business. Nonetheless, in looking up, you know, who's who in the zoo, to know who to ask, simply how to use a sidewalk, I find out that my town supervisor, who was the head of the town ZBA for almost 15-plus years, went into the position of town supervisor through an appointment, bypassing the electoral election process. Once he got on as town supervisor, he brought an attorney with his land use firm to the position of the ZBA attorney for the town. So logically, if you can't use the land, you want to go to these people, and they're pushing back. They won't even take my calls, whatever. So I look up, well, who is this ZBA attorney? So I find out through an internet search, through Open Secrets, things of that nature, that this ZBA attorney with the private practice law firm in town of the town supervisor opened up a political action committee called Friends to Reelect, and I'll leave his name out, the town supervisor. And in that capacity, she took money in a pact that she opened from the town attorney, the town clerk, the, all the people saying, you know, giving me the runaround, town attorney, town clerk, former town clerk that now sat on the town board, who happens to be married to a partner in a law firm where the other partner is a cousin of the town supervisor. And so all of these people, all playing, you know, duck-duck-goose with me, Christine Duffy, to favor non-disabled people, and I'm finding out, like, well, look at these connections here. You know, this is an inherent conflict of interest. So I sent a request to the town Ethics Board. Unbeknownst to me, the town supervisor had chosen, and with the board, the Ethics Chair was an attorney from the Albany County Democratic Committee that worked alongside my town supervisor. So now, she's got this ethics complaint, and it's from me, about the town supervisor, and about the town attorney, and about the ZBA attorney, all of whom she knows. Does she recuse herself? Absolutely not. She even takes the information outside the Ethics Committee, sends me some letterhead from SUNY Albany, and tells me it's incomplete. Then tells me that she couldn't find any evidence of any monies for the town supervisor. Now, that couldn't have been true, because not only was it a simple internet search, that information's available at the Albany County Board of Elections, where I too had gotten the information. So with that, after she made the decision that, no, we didn't find any evidence, so there is no ethics violation, she resigns. The ZBA attorney resigns, all for different reasons, of course. And now, the town supervisor, he sits pretty. Okay, it's done, I don't know that there's anything I can do, because I can't, because I'm disabled, I'm on a fixed income, and they know that people like myself can't do that Article 78, that's a 5,000 K decision and up. And that's another way of blocking people from having due process. So I called the Albany County Ethics Board. Can you please help me out here? I really need to get down the street. These are the players that are all interconnected and stopping me. They say, too bad, so sad, Mrs. Duffy, not my job. Or I go to the next step up, I go to the state. The state says, at that time it was Jacob, I'm so sorry, Mrs. Duffy, we only handle state problems. Well, we gotta open up the jurisdiction, because after, now, everybody up and down the state knows about Christine Duffy's ethics complaint, Gilderlin's not done. They wait for Janet, oh, they wait for the ZBA attorney to decide to come back. She's now back on the ZBA. The town board said, the supervisor said, he spoke to someone to get an advisory opinion. Who'd he speak to? This group? We don't know. We don't know who he spoke to. He didn't have to disclose it. Would have been great to piggyback on what the other person just said if I could have looked it up. But now she's back, and I don't know if more pay-to-play is going on, but it went on, and nonetheless, she should never have been brought back. But they weren't done. They took the ethics complaint, and they changed the ethics laws. And I'm asking, because of the whole trickle-down effect of laws, that they changed the law that you can only make this complaint 10 months after the aggrieved incident. Well, you know, chopping heck, how would I have known 10 months after they were doing pay-to-play? There should be no statute of limitations on when you committed your ethics violation. Too bad, so sad to you. We, the public, when we find out that you've engaged in wrongdoing, we should have that ability to come to this level, because you are, New York State is my home. I mean, home rule. You're, yeah, you're my home rule. And inside my home is my dysfunctional family in my town. And I'm telling you, there's no fun being in a dysfunctional family if you've never been in one. I want to ask that you be aware that there's a law here at the state level, in the town of Gilderlin where I live, the ZBA members included Jacob Crawford, he was the head of the Gilderlin Democratic Party, and very well aware that I couldn't get down the street.
Ms. Duffy, you have one minute.
You got it. He found a way to get from, I'm there, he found a way to get off the ZBA, onto the town board, but he felt, you know, maybe it wouldn't look so good, so the head of the Gilderlin Democratic Party Chair, Jacob Crawford, and the head of the Albany County Democratic Party Chair, who also happens to be from Gilderlin, Dustin Meade, they just switched seats so it wouldn't look bad. No, we have to change the law. No political party chairs on any, on any ethics, on any leadership, and we have to look at Public Officers Law 74 about making campaign, giving campaign donations. Nobody that's in a public office should be making campaign contributions. Let's keep this clean. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you very much, Ms. Duffy. I'm going a little bit out of turn here. Our next speaker will be Erica Vladimir. Ms. Vladimir?
Thank you to the Commission on Ethics and Lobbying in Government, COLIG, as well as your esteemed staff for providing this opportunity to testify. My name is Erica Vladimir, and I am a co-founder of the New York State Sexual Harassment Working Group. We are a volunteer workers collective of former city and state legislative staff and citizens. of former city and state legislative staff who have all experienced sexual harassment, abuse, and retaliation at the hands of elected and appointed officials. Together, we have worked to strengthen laws to protect workers against harassment and discrimination, create clearer paths to justice for those who do experience harassment and discrimination, and stronger accountability mechanisms for those who abuse their power. Our work does largely focus on public service, but a lot of the advocacy that we do also impacts all sectors across New York State. I do have to say, like my colleague Rachel from Reinvent Albany, that it is pretty frustrating to stand up here and providing testimony, knowing that KOLIG is currently being undermined by Andrew Cuomo's lawsuit challenging the constitutionality. I had the pleasure of working with some incredible good government groups in submitting an amicus brief in support of KOLIG. And we also worked to create the strongest, most independent entity that we could because that is what New York State deserves. Things can always be better, but the fact is, is that KOLIG is the best that we've had so far, and is certainly constitutional. The impact of this retribution-fueled lawsuit is significant. It is hindering KOLIG's ability to hire staff and move investigations forward. And it also is providing ammunition for other individuals under investigation by KOLIG who are seeking to have their cases dismissed. And I want to speak personally for a moment. Former state Senator Jeff Klein, who shoved his tongue in my mouth when I was his policy analyst and counsel, is using this case to put his investigation, his administrative hearing, on pause indefinitely. And so his arguments, they are relying on Cuomo's arguments and lawsuits, claiming nothing should move forward until the Court of Appeals hears Cuomo's case. And it has now been almost seven years since the former senator first asked the Ethics Commission, at that time J.Cope, to look into and open an investigation, to look into these allegations. I have shared my story over and over and over and over and over again with investigators over that time. My day job brings me to the Capitol, and so I hold my breath at every Capitol and legislative office building elevator. For seven years, I have had to wonder whether Klein's clients and the legislators that he meets with know about this investigation and if they've taken steps to protect their own staff. And I'm sharing all of this with you commissioners and staff because although much of your work focuses on finances and transparency and the like, a lot of your work also centers on humanity for people like me and public servants, legislative staffers, staffers who work in agency and in the executive chamber. We all deserve safe working environments, and these staff do too. And so that's why I want to first and foremost urge KOLIG to expand your current legislative proposal that explicitly codifies sexual harassment as conduct that violates the Code of Ethics so that all types of harassment and discrimination are codified as violations of the Code of Ethics. Human experiences cannot be segmented. While harassment and discrimination are severely underreported, studies show that it is women of color who experience it the most. And many women of color who report sexual harassment also report experiencing racial discrimination. So by choosing to explicitly codify sexual harassment and no other forms of harassment and discrimination in New York State Code of Ethics, you're asking public servants to bifurcate their experience and their trauma. And I understand the Commission's focus on sexual harassment. While its predecessor, J.Cope, did take on sexual harassment investigations, the Commission has also faced legal arguments that J.Cope, now KOLIG, does not have jurisdiction over sexual harassment claims. Surprise, surprise, former state Senator Jeff Klein has avoided accountability for years with this argument before he shifted to pausing everything because of this constitutional case that the Court of Appeals is currently reviewing. By codifying sexual harassment into the Code of Ethics, this ambiguity can be cleared up and will move investigations forward and also hearings. That's a good thing. But I am afraid that explicitly codifying sexual harassment will also signal that KOLIG does not have, or frankly, want jurisdiction over other types of sexual, of other types of harassment and discrimination. So by trying to clear up any confusion about jurisdiction over sexual harassment, KOLIG may accidentally create confusion and about its jurisdiction over other types of harassment and discrimination. And as has been mentioned before, there is existing legislation to create power or authority over all types of harassment and discrimination for KOLIG S-7137A and A-9279. Look, I recognize that the Commission hesitates to open its doors to harassment and discrimination complaints because it could potentially increase the caseload. But it is already established that sexual harassment is an ethics violation by precedent. And so I find it hard to justify how one type of discrimination can be a violation of the New York State Ethics Code and yet other types of harassment and discrimination cannot. In addition, all types of harassment and, including, sorry. In addition, including all types of harassment and discrimination in the New York State Ethics Code would conform to your recommendation to add accessorial liability, did I say that right? To the executive law, Civil Service Law, Lobbying Act, and Public Officers Law. Both of these changes ensure power abusers are held accountable for their actions because, after all, harassers are often surrounded by enablers and protectors who will go so far as to violate the state ethics laws to protect their boss. This happened with Jeff Klein after the senior staff that I went to immediately after the experience then brought together other senior staffers a mere two hours later to figure out how they were going to handle it. We also saw this with Andrew Cuomo's senior staff, who gaslit staff who reported sexual harassment, moved them to other positions to be out of the way of Andrew Cuomo so he didn't harass them anymore, but failed to follow their own chamber policies. None of these enablers have been held accountable for their role in either hurting me or the executive chamber staff. So the need for accountability in these situations cannot be overstated. So needless to say, I am highly supportive of this legislative proposal. Lastly, I know that my colleagues and I are asking you all to take on a lot more, and that will require adequate sustained funding and staffing. It is clear that your current budget is insufficient and that the Commission needs sustainably more funding to meaningfully fulfill your obligations and responsibilities. I support an independent budgeting model for KOLIG and all enforcement bodies. And as my colleagues in the room have done, I encourage KOLIG to draft its own independent budgeting model. So thank you for the opportunity to speak to you all today. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
All right. Thank you very much, Ms. Vladimir. Our next speaker will be Mohamed Junaid.
I thank the Commission for giving me the opportunity to speak before you. It's the first time I'm speaking before something, so excuse me for that. My name is Mohamed Junaid. I'm a research scientist with the New York State Institute for Basic Research. And in my job capacity, I write grants and secure funds.
If you could raise the microphone a bit to see if it will go on.
So I secure grants from public and private sources that allow me to hire personnel and budgets. So in that capacity, I'm deemed as a policymaker. So I do support ethics laws for employees. It will increase trust of the public. I do have a couple of comments. As someone who files these applications every year, the language that is used in this application is kind of very legal terminology, which makes it difficult for people like me to understand. So sometimes we might make mistakes. So my one suggestion is make this language easy for us to understand so we can provide the information that is requested. And the second thing that I have is when we ask for ethics, everybody should be included. There shouldn't be any exceptions. That's all I have. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Ben Weinberg. Mr. Weinberg?
Thank you, commissioners. First, let me apologize for reading from my phone. I don't usually like to do that. But I was moving from one place to another and didn't have time to print. Thank you for giving me and us the opportunity to speak before you today. My name is Ben Weinberg, and I'm the Director of Public Policy for Citizens Union. Before I start commenting on the legislative agenda, we just wish to address the court decision in Cuomo v. KOLIG. When KOLIG was being created, Citizens Union expressed concern that the appointment mechanism still left their responsibility directly with the officials. The Commission must regulate. Now, lower courts have found that the Commission is in fact too independent of elected officials, and specifically the governor. Clearly, we believe these decisions were wrong, and together with other good government and civic groups, we submitted two amicus briefs on the matter, which supported the constitutionality of the Commission's appointment process, the role of the law school deans in the governor's removal process. I'll just say, we believe New York State should not go back to the days of J.Cope and its flawed structure, which was simply incapable of providing the necessary ethics oversight to promote public confidence in state government. We appreciate the Commission's public engagement work over the past year, and that included stakeholder roundtable, lobbying surveys, and more effective announcements on meetings and actions. And we also applaud the administrative changes that the Commission has made and implemented since the last public hearing in response to recommendations made by advocates and good government groups. Three recommendations we have made and has been adopted is the issue of communications between members of the Commission and the officials who appoint them, the procedure of providing advice to elected officials and high-ranking executives, and developing clear rules on disclosing the status of investigations. On the legislative agenda, Citizens Union appreciates KOLIG's legislative proposal to improve transparency and enforcement, specifically as it relates to accessorial liability, new penalties for certain violations, and electronic filings of financial disclosures and lobbying reports. And we support both bills on electronic filings that are included in the agenda. Now, we want to make a few comments on the deferred legislative priorities. The first is the issue of allowing KOLIG to respond if a requestor makes a public statement about informal guidance. We brought that up at last year's roundtable event and suggested that KOLIG should be allowed to respond publicly in cases when an official misstates in publicly informal advice they receive. And as the Commission mentions in the document, there is, the state law does allow the Commission to make that response, but only in certain cases, when that action is, when the response is needed to prevent a crime or fraud or substantial threat to public health or by a court order. And we appreciate the Commission's plans to publish a formal advisory opinion on this matter and the proposal to issue general ethics guidance in these cases. However, we do note that issuing only general guidance without referring to the case that prompted it or the public official who misrepresented the advice might not actually defer individuals from misusing the confidentiality of advice. And if the Commission believes it, it is constrained by state law. We recommend that law be amended, especially in cases when high-level officials misrepresent guidance in response to media inquiries. The other issue I would like to mention is the proposal to disclose lobbying, sorry, lobbyist fundraising. So that's another issue we recommended last year, and we appreciate KOLIG's view that broadening the reporting of lobbyists' campaign contribution would serve the interests of transparency. And you did mention support for expanding campaign finance reporting. However, we do want to mention we believe reporting requirement in lobbying filings is needed. So if we require donors to report whether they are registered lobbyists or not, that would shed lights, sheds light on the works of a single campaign or a single candidate. But a different purpose is served by requiring lobbyists to report the candidates or elected official to whom they provide fundraising services and the amount of money raised in fundraising events that they organize. Those disclosures shed light on the activities of lobbying firms, who often leverage the bonds made when serving campaigns to advance their clients and the business they seek before government. In New York City, the city lobbying law requires lobbyists and lobbying firms to disclose information about their political consulting and fundraising activity in a periodic report that details the individuals that provided these services, the candidates that got these services, how much money they charged, and the amount of money raised. Reporters and watchdog groups have used that information before to inform the public about potential conflicts of interest. Additionally, I would like to comment on the issue of whether lobbying filers should include support opposition or other positions on bills. We want to reiterate our support for this policy, which we believe would provide a better idea to the public of how lobbyists and lobbying resources are being used. We understand the concerns that KOLIG raised about taking nuanced positions on bills, but we do believe there are effective ways to define the types of positions, and we refer to the excellent review in Reinvent Albany's testimony on what other states are doing on this matter. On adding discrimination claims to the Commission jurisdictions, we were glad to see that KOLIG supports adding sexual harassment to the state Code of Ethics. However, we respectfully urge the Commission to support legislation that explicitly prohibits harassment and discrimination. We support the bill that was mentioned here before. It would reflect the compliance with the state human rights law. And I think this was mentioned earlier. And we do support increasing funding to allow those increased powers. Two issues, two priorities that are not in the KOLIG agenda, and we would like to highlight and reiterate our support. One is including among reportable matters lobbying regarding nomination or confirmation that require a Senate confirmation. As I'm sure you know, that legislation passed the Senate in 2023, vetoed by the governor, and then passed the Senate, sorry, passed the legislator, vetoed by the governor, passed the Senate this year. Support from KOLIG would help raise awareness to this important issue. The other topic is allowing organizations that spend $5,000 to $10,000 on lobbying a year to report every six months and not every two months, which would assist smaller filers and reduce administrative burden. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Weinberg. Our next speaker will be Blair Horner. Mr. Horner?
Good afternoon. My name is Blair Horner. I'm the executive director with NiPerg, New York Public Interest Research Group, nonpartisan, not-for-profit. Thank you for the opportunity to testify, and I'm impressed with your fortitude to be able to sit through hearings. It's always an impressive thing when you see people sitting through them. Well, the rest of us get to sit in the back and talk to each other. So we have written testimony. Generally speaking, we support the proposals advanced by the Commission. I don't want to be too repetitive over what some of my other colleagues have said, so I'll just stress a few things. One is that when we talk about, Ben was just talking about it, about lobbyists being involved in fundraising. I just want to point out that in Albany, during the legislative session, which is roughly 60 days, roughly 40 nights at the state Capitol, there's anywhere from 100 to 200 campaign fundraisers that occur at the state Capitol. So who do they expect to be there? You? Anybody from Brooklyn? No, they expect lobbyists to show up for campaign contributions. So it's part of the business. And so I think it's important, as best as you can, to weave in, Ben was talking about one proposal. Another proposal we recommend considering, and it's in our written testimony, is that basically half the country, a little bit more than half the country, have restrictions on lobbyists being involved in campaign fundraising during session. Some go beyond that because they're a unique class. Two other things I want to just add for your consideration in terms of your proposals, and you just heard it from Mr. Weinberg just a second ago. One is the definition of lobbying. Right now, under New York law, if you're lobbying to influence the appointment to the Board of Regents, it's considered lobbying. If you're lobbying to influence the appointment to the Public Service Commission, it's not. Now, how does that make any sense? Well, one is because it's a resolution passed by both houses. And so resolutions are covered under lobbying. But lobbying for appointments through Senate confirmation is not. Now, the governor vetoed the bill. I could spare you all the details unless you want me to tell you about them. me to tell you about them, about why, but it was vetoed. We think it would have passed again this year had there been time at the end of session. We urge you to include that in there because to us, it seems like a glaring loophole. Now, the second point I want to make in closing is more conceptual than necessarily specific legislation and may run counter to what I just said. Increasingly, as we come, as the state comes up with a more sophisticated system of monitoring lobbying, in many ways, it's the most sophisticated in the country, you create barriers to small groups participating because it's difficult to comply with state law, and the penalties are huge. One of the recommendations, a bill that's been introduced, is to raise the threshold, which hasn't been raised in a long time, to $10,000, and that would still capture the big-money folks, but allow the ability for smaller not-for-profits, for example, to participate. And the legislation specifically identifies not-for-profits because they are currently regulated by the IRS in a way that's different from anybody else. So allowing those entities to participate, well, raising the threshold would make it, I think, less difficult for them to participate in expressing their point of view. And adding to that, New York City has its own comprehensive, complicated system of lobbying, which to a large extent overlaps the state regulation, and you regulate New York City lobbying, too. Now, the laws don't match. They're similar, but they don't match. In our written testimony, we recommend that you work with the city clerk's office to see if there's a way to start harmonizing that, because that, too, creates an obstacle to people to petition the government to express their point of view on issues, both at the city and particularly at the city level. So that is another way to, that's not an easy nut to cut. I mean, it's definitely a Gordian knot. I mean, it's not an easy thing to do because the city system is sophisticated and covers a lot of things, and some of it, most of it's covered by the state, but not entirely. We would argue that the, you should advance proposals that would raise both to the same standard, because that would make the most sense. But that is another way to also deal with the participation by smaller not-for-profits in terms of advocating for themselves before the city council and the state legislature, raise this threshold, consider raising the threshold, and begin some sort of process to see if there's a way to harmonize the state and city lobbying definitions. And that's it.
Thank you very much, Mr. Horner. Our next speaker here in Manhattan is Ms. Elena Sassauer. Sassauer? See if that works.
Thank you. I have requested to be at the end because my testimony is about three minutes beyond the 10-minute.
Yes.
Thank you. I am Elena Sassauer, Director of the Nonpartisan Nonprofit Citizens Organization Center for Judicial Accountability, CJA. Our website is www.judgewatch.org, and from its left-side panel, "Testimony," you can find a link for this testimony and to the open-and-shut prime evidence substantiating it. At last year's public hearing on March 29, 2023, I stated that based on your first six and a half months, I would be filing a complaint against you, to you, for your substantial neglect of duty and misconduct in office arising from your willful violations of Public Officers Law 74 prescribing conflicts of interest that is your duty to enforce as to others and of Executive Law 94.10b explicitly mandating that you each disclose personal, professional, and financial conflicts of interest with respect to complaints and recuse yourself or be recused by vote of your fellow commissioners. I deferred actually filing such complaint so as to give you the opportunity to take steps to rectify the violations that my testimony summarized and evidentially established pertaining to the eight complaints I filed with Kolig by a single complaint letter on its day one, July 8, 2022. All involve the false instrument reports by which New York's four statewide elected executive officers and all its 213 state legislators have procured unlawful and unconstitutional pay raises for themselves and for judges and district attorneys embedded in a state budget that they have driven off the constitutional rails to steal more taxpayer monies and subvert constitutional lawful state governance through massive insertions of non-fiscal, non-revenue-producing policy. As to this July 8, 2020 complaint, I stated, surely no complaint that the Commission thereafter received remotely approaches in magnitude and breadth any of these eight complaints, let alone all of them. I identified your serious and substantial conflicts of interest pertaining thereto, the least being your Kolig per diems are tied to Supreme Court justice salaries, that the false instrument reports had inflated by $80,000, and that by an unsigned November 17, 2020 letter, your Investigations Division purported in violation of Executive Law 94.10f that you had voted to close the July 8, 2020 complaint and its October 6, 2020 supplement. I concluded with a procedural suggestion that your letters disposing of complaints indicate 30 days in which a complainant could seek reconsideration, similar to what appellate division rules provide for its attorney grievance committees. The last sentence of my testimony expressly requested such reconsideration of the July 8, 2020 complaint. Instead of confronting my testimony with findings of fact and conclusions of law as to the legitimacy of your November 17, 2020 letter and about your handling of my FOIL requests pertaining to the July 8, 2022 complaint about which I testified and about the corruption of the process by which you were appointed commissioners involving the so-called Independent Review Committee of 15 law school deans about which I also testified, you ignored it all. This enabled you to issue on August 28, 2023, a fraudulent annual report for 2022, extolling the success of Kolig and the Independent Review Committee. A week and a half later, at September 6, 2023, special meetings of your then-legal committee and ethics committee, you dumped two recommendations you purported that I had made at the March 29, 2023 hearing. As for my recommendation for a reconsideration procedure for complaints, which in fact was my only expressed recommendation, the deceits about it by Kolig staff, including that it would require an amendment to Executive Law 94, resulted in pushback from several legal committee members and a vote tabling the recommendation to a subsequent meeting so that staff could provide further guidance on the subject. On October 2, 2023, as an explicit test of the staff deceit that an unofficial reconsideration procedure exists inasmuch as a complainant can resubmit his or her complaint with additional information or file a new complaint, I did both. I filed a new complaint, the complaint against you, your executive director, your general counsel, and high-ranking staff that I had announced I would be filing at the March 29, 2023 hearing. It was now updated and supplemented by an analysis of your fraudulent 2022 annual report and of what had taken place at your September 6, 2023 meetings, and embodied separate relief denominated as, quote, officially testing the Commission's unofficial reconsideration renewal remedy by resubmitting CJA's July 8, 2022 complaint and October 6, 2022 supplement based on the within evidence that in November 17, 2022 staff letter that the Commission voted to close it is indefensible, unquote. Your response? You excluded me from your rigged November 1, 2023 roundtable discussion of recommendations from the March 29, 2023 hearing that you were adopting and embodying into your 2024 legislative agenda and ignored without acknowledgement the October 2, 2023 complaint. Executive Law 94.10e expressly states, quote, "The Commission shall notify the complainant that the Commission has received their complaint," unquote. I pointed this out by a December 5, 2023 email to you, further asking, quote, "What is the status of the October 2, 2023 complaint, and additionally, the status of its request for reconsideration of CJA's July 8, 2022 sworn complaint and its October 6, 2022 sworn supplement?" Please advise and also furnish pursuant to FOIL the Commission's written procedures manual for receipt, docketing, acknowledgement, preliminary review, investigation of complaints, notification of disposition to complainants, and reconsideration, unquote. You responded only to the FOIL request by a January 9 email stating that, quote, "Written procedures are in preparation, but at this time are not yet final," unquote. Twenty days later, on January 29, 2024, I filed with you a third complaint, this against the seven members of the Third Commission on Legislative, Judicial, and Executive Compensation for their false instrument report that would raise judicial salaries effective April 1, 2024. In other words, it was a complaint that would directly impact raises to your per diems. Indeed, more than that, it would crack open the whole mass of conflict-of-interest-driven corruption involving false instrument report, pay rate, false instrument report pay raises and the budget that was the subject of CJA's 8-in-1 July 8, 2022 complaint. Four months later, in the absence of your acknowledgement of this complaint, I sent you a May 30 email asking as to its status and the number you assigned to it. I reiterated this a week later by a July 5 email, further stating that I still had no acknowledgement of the October 2, 2023 complaint. I asked whether you had not by then finalized your, quote, "Written procedures manual for receipt, docketing, acknowledgement, preliminary review, investigation of complaints, notification of disposition of complainants, and reconsideration," unquote. Another four months later, I would ask this yet again by an October 7 email requesting the numbers you had assigned to these two complaints and what their status was. I have only a short bit left. A full month elapsed before you responded on November 7. By then, I had filed with you a fourth complaint on October 29, 2024, against the four statewide elected executive officers and all 213 state legislators for benefiting themselves by colluding in the Third Commission on Legislative, Judicial, and Executive Compensation's false instrument report, the subject of CJA's January 29, 2024 complaint that you had been sitting on. I had also by then sent you a November 4 email for the number you had assigned to the October 29 complaint. As for your November 7 response, you asserted that the status of CJA's October 2, 2023 complaint is closed and that the number you had assigned to it was 22-99. As 22-99 is the number you assigned to the July 8, 2022 complaint, you clearly assigned no number to the October 2, 2023 complaint against yourself, which you did not.
Ms. Sassauer. Ms. Sassauer.
Status of CJA's January 29, 2024 complaint, you asserted that it is open and that the number you had assigned to it was 24-141. Evidence from this number is that it was not assigned until late October, early November, and possibly only in response to the October 29, 2024 complaint.
I'll give you another minute, and then you can submit in writing whatever you have.
Entitled "Internal Controls and Procedures," identifying that it had been updated on updated on October 17, 2024, with a single footnote about Jacob.
Ms. Sassauer, you've asked us to follow the rules in various ways, and yet you don't want to.
I'm almost done.
You've got one minute.
Speakers to fill this time. Assuming comparable internal controls and procedures existed in whole or in part over the past two-plus years of Kolig's existence, and this was the subject of my repeated FOIL requests, beginning July 26, 2022, and culminating with my February 7, 2023 FOIL appeal, identifying that they should be existing, Kolig staff, with your knowledge, flagrantly violated same with respect to CJA's complaints. I'm now concluding. Kolig's most important function is appropriately addressing complaints, and as chronicled by CJA's October 2, 2023 complaint with its painstaking 46-page, single-spaced analysis of your 2022 annual report, of your monthly operations reports, of the videos of your meetings, and of Part 941.2 and 941.3 of your rules obfuscating your duty under Executive Law 94. You have been failing in that function flagrantly from the outset, while simultaneously flagrantly violating conflict-of-interest mandates, both with respect to yourselves and staff, and collecting unlawfully hourly per diems that now total well over a quarter of a million dollars. Indeed, as a result of your self-serving and deliberate nonfeasance and cover-up of the October 2, 2023 complaint against yourselves and Kolig staff, all the frauds of your 2022 annual report are essentially replicated by your 2023 annual report, and with respect to your handling of complaints even more brazenly. For instance, although the 2023 annual report states that Kolig, quote, "received and processed 156 tips, complaints, referrals, and reports in 2023," unquote.
Ms. Sassauer? May I ask you a question? Ms. Sassauer? Your microphone has been removed. Two minutes ago, you said you were concluding, Ms. Sassauer. Ms. Sassauer, nobody can hear you.
Sassauer, we gave everybody 10 minutes, and they felt that was comfortable for them.
However, you took 17, and that really isn't fair to anybody else. You, excuse me, I'm speaking now. Excuse me. No, no, you've had your say. There's no microphone, Ms. Sassauer. We're finished. We are finished. And you are entitled, you are entitled to that opinion, but you are now finished. You are now finished. You're entitled to your opinion. Thank you very much for your testimony. We will take it into consideration, and you are finished. You are finished, Ms. Sassauer. Thank you very much.
Let me just say, at this point, we have received written testimony from a number of today's speakers and from several others. We will keep the record open, the written record open, until the end of the week. So if anyone has anything additional they wish to submit or have not submitted, please feel free to do so. We would welcome that. And with that, I turn it back to our chair.
Thank you. We appreciate the comments of each and every one of you, including the criticisms, because that's how we work, and that's how we try to do as best we can in this context, meeting with people, getting the ideas and approaches that would be suggested to us so that we can, in fact, provide a better, a better, for want of a better word, a product for the public in terms of transparency, in terms of ethical behavior, and in terms of having our government work in a way that is without that taint. We do not operate in a vacuum. We understand what's going on, and we will try very hard, as we have in the past, and we appreciate some of the comments that recognize that, to do better in the future. In any event, on behalf of the Commission, I thank you, all of our speakers, for providing us with constructive comments today. We appreciate all of your comments and the time that you took to give us your thoughts because public comment and feedback is paramount to effective government. The public hearing is now closed, and thank you all.